This conference will now be recorded.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam second. All those in favor say aye. Right?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have approved the minutes of the August 12th meetings. Everyone get a chance to look at both of those? Any corrections?
Not necessarily a correction, but in regards to the NIACOG and the billing of first publication fees, it says that we can send it there. I don't want it to be interpreted that we will send it there. I want the board to decide that before that happens.
Right.
I'd like to add it to the agenda for discussion when it comes in.
We can do that. Yep. Before it goes there, I want that to happen, yes.
Okay. That, your correction motion?
Yeah, I mean, the word doesn't have to come out of there. I just don't want it to be assumed that it's going to go there.
Okay. Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark second. Any further discussion? Recall Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Motion passes. Kami Attorney.
I don't have anything for you.
All right. Any questions for the Kami Attorney from the board? Thank you. Sheriff update. I don't see sheriff. Department head discussion.
Yeah. Good morning. Conservation Board held their monthly meeting last month. Things on the agenda that were discussed was campground design plans. The board reviewed our phases, or our, not phases, but our concept plans for that. So they just kind of went through that process. Board did approve moving forward with creating a 28E agreement with the city of Mitchell for, we've kind of always had a verbal agreement with the land that they own down there at Interstate Park, that we can use it as a park, but the city and the conservation board now want to go ahead and get something in writing for use of the park since we're looking at doing some upgrades so that way there's stuff on paper. That water trail project has got started last week. Board was just kind of updated on the process of that, so they did start last week. Now they're waiting to get back out there again with the flooding, so we'll see what time they get back out there on that. Elaine was there to talk about stuff going on with the trail, with the Wiggle Days and things that are going on there. They got a ride coming up that just occurred this last weekend on golf carts, and then they also approved the purchase of a mower, which will be put on the new mini excavator so we can mow shorelines and also side areas of trees and that sort of stuff. The rest was just normal routine business. Any specific questions or anything for me? All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question about getting the legal description for that city and state project. So would it be the, just where the line would be going that's on there? I don't remember where the road that is that goes by the cemetery there that goes west? Or is it like the area that it serves to?
Depends on, depends on what the estimate that they presented to us covers for construction costs. If that estimate is just for our right of way, then it's just our right of way that would be the description. If that estimate covers broad scope of the whole project, well then all those other parcels would need to be put in there also.
Like it says that it will serve land in like the shaded areas. That's where I get lost.
So I would think that it would be the development there where those houses are, so that road that goes past the school, you know, to the edge of that development and then to the edge of the city limits is where that development ends. But it goes to the west across Foothill Avenue and over to where the sewer hooks end. You know, so that entity.
The part that we presented was for the line that's in the road wide.
Okay.
Only the right of way.
It begins where we tapped our improvements. There's a nipple there ready to accept the pipe, and then it will go straight east. We would cut through T-26 to the boundary line of the county, and that's where it would be capped until we get infrastructure built in the development areas.
Okay, so it doesn't include that whole thing, so it just goes to that?
Just our right of way then?
Yeah. Just, yeah.
And the intent is to run it into 420 streets right away?
That's correct.
So according to what you did with the Stacyville one, you'd have to include that street as well that goes to the west. That's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Okay. Any other department head? All right. Kami Engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Real brief updates. McIntyre Bridge is still progressing even though we've got high water. They're done pile driving. They're getting ready to, and they have been doing some forming for some encasements and abutment stuff. So they're still progressing. Now that they're out of water, things might be a little bit easier for them. On the truck route around town, the contractor came in today to start shouldering. It'll probably take two, two and a half days to get the shouldering done on that, and I still don't have a date yet. I asked the prime what they were thinking of for when the painters were coming in, and he'll give you that information as soon as he gets in contact with them. So road's still closed officially, but soon hopefully we can get it wrapped up. One other thing, we've got some equipment we were thinking about trying to, we're going to trade in an old Volvo for that one cat that we're getting from, from the Duluth group. We have one Volvo left. It really serves no purpose. We've got the joysticks out of it. It doesn't really do anything. So we're thinking about maybe trying to do a purple wave auction on, maybe getting rid of that machine. We've got an old international dump truck that serves its purpose. And then some miscellaneous items. We might throw a purple wave auction up soon and try to get rid of some miscellaneous stuff before winter. So just so you guys are aware of that, so. Dog up for you this morning? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discussion on having all IT in one budget?
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
So we had our department head meeting, and one of the things that was brought up is the IT budget and bringing all of the departments together for all their IT purchasing needs into the IT department. There seemed to be consensus. Nobody really said anything one way or another about the idea of being able to do that. Now, this is something we can't address until next fiscal year, obviously, because it wasn't done for this year. I'm not sure that's kind of where it was left at, at our department head meeting, so I'm not sure what you guys need or want from me when it comes to answers on that. I didn't put this on the agenda, so I just want to open it up to questions, I guess, best I can.
So...
Conservation did say we would stay separate.
Correct.
Yes.
Which makes sense.
So I think what would happen is if, prior to having your budget ready to go and buttoned up by December, January, you would go to all departments and say, this is, what do you need for this, 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 and that. Way you would itemize that into your budget planning for fiscal year and then present that to the board.
Okay.
And then they would be able to take the IT stuff out of their budget. Right? That would be the ideal. So it would be nice if you could start on that, like maybe October, and then just get what they can do, what they need to have done.
Yeah, absolutely. That's no problem.
It would help your budget. That way you can get with Rachel and kind of go through and itemize things together.
Yeah, no, that's perfectly fine. That makes perfect sense to me, so.
The election part of the IT still has to remain under the auditor.
Yeah.
So that, that was the only thing that Elizabeth stated. And Joel also made that comment early on last year. I think it would facilitate your budgeting and securing equipment. It'll take more communication, but...
No, that makes total sense. So I don't think anybody was really opposed to it.
In that way, when the equipment comes in, instead of going, obviously they bring it to you to get put together, but instead of them having it and having those items under their budget, it would just be all itemized under your budget. You'll be the one doing the sticker tags, keeping track of every single item, and then they won't have to keep control of that.
Yeah, that makes total sense to me.
Okay.
Then who does the inventory when it needs to be done?
Right.
Which would be, yeah, that'll be a slight change, but it makes a lot of sense to me to control that inventory portion of it, and I have no problem with that.
And doing it as it comes in?
Correct, and then handing it off to the, handing it off to the departments and whatever they want to do with it at that point. It's, you know, I'm not worried about it.
Yeah, so he can have a list, have the itemized number, and then he'll have to say, put Sheriff's Department, this is how many items that I have in Sheriff's Department, and then go on and goes.
And that way I can also record the purchase date and the purchase amount.
Yeah.
Which was one thing we were missing the last time around, so that's something I would improve too.
Right.
Through that system.
I think that would be a better system than what we are doing.
I agree. Be a lot less confusing.
I think the only thing is, yeah, the election and then Shannon, whatever she has to do with the state.
Yeah, and we'll have to work with the assessors too, because they're a whole budget thing, something separate.
And I, I don't know if we talked about it in the meeting, but then you would also be in charge of maybe rotating the stuff as it gets older.
Yep, that's correct. I know we kind of fall behind. We'll start grabbing something else's used stuff just because, so it would keep us on a more current.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, that Windows 11 upgrade is, I just got to get Melissa, and I talked to her, getting set up, and that takes care of the courthouse and secondary roads. And then it's just a few computers at the sheriff, and I'll be hands off buying new equipment, at least computers. And we'll be in a very good spot because we'll be able to have that two to three year rotation plan in place in a very healthy way, because we're going to start at a good place, and then we can have planning that actually makes sense.
Yeah.
So that's definitely part of what I want to get done and be way easier to communicate that way.
I think that would be great.
This is a good move.
Agreed.
Okay.
That's what I got.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? We'll move on to discussion of possible action on policy for testing wireless panic buttons/links system.
So I didn't write this policy. This was presented, did Dave present this, or?
Chris.
Chris presented this, that's right. As the, again, testing policy for the panic buttons. They wrote all that, so I'm just up here to see if I can answer any questions on the fly that you might have. But reading through it, I don't see anything, you know, particularly out of order on it. It's, it's good to have that in place so everybody knows when they're going to get tested and how they're going to get tested.
Okay.
And I can't add too much information past that.
Correct.
But I can try.
It's nothing more than what we're currently doing. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, it's just written down.
It's just the annual resolution.
Coming in our policy plan.
But I think it's a good idea.
All right.
Is that 1310-25?
Yes, 1310-25 would be the resolution number.
I move to approve the testing wireless panic button link system, resolution 1310-25.
Pam made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second? Any further discussion? Recall Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye.
Aye.
Sidney, did you write this one too? Discussion of possible action on Mitchell County electronic key fob policy?
Yeah, this is one that I wrote. Really, again, this is similar. This is all being done. The two things that this adds is making sure that the department heads are in charge of telling me what access that their employees need, because obviously I don't know that and I don't want to assign that. That's kind of what's been happening anyway, but from a security standpoint, that'll be done. And then it also has the possibility of when they're lost, who gets charged for that key fob. Key fobs are about $15 each, and it just has some language in there to address the monetary part of it, and really that's, that's all there is to it.
So in addition to that, I'm assuming, just like the equipment, you'll have a worksheet that tracks who's got what fobs.
It's actually with, it's actually within the software, and I went through and cleaned out a couple years' worth of stuff. Yeah, so, correct, yeah, it's all digital, but there is an easily pulled report that shows all the information.
All right. Motion to approve, resolution 1311-25.
I'll make a motion.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll sit.
Pam, second. Any further discussion?
I do have a question. I've been here five years or longer, and is there a time of day that these fobs don't work?
It can be set to have a time of day that they don't work. The least amount of access that we would give anyone is business hours, 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, for just the first floor. That's the least amount of access that anyone's allowed, that would start out for people to get. So I don't know what your setup is off the top of my head, but it could be that's only first floor, 8:00 to 4:30. So yes, you can.
Didn't you say once a long time ago, like at 4:00 AM, that something? I just, and, I mean, I'm obviously probably not going to be here at 4:00 AM, but I just was wondering if there was a frame throughout 24 hours that they did not work?
Yes, there is for certain, for certain people. Okay.
I guess I'd like it to, at least for me, there's times I'll come in here at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night sometimes, and then also weekends, Saturdays to Sundays, so I guess I would like more of a broader range than just 8:00 to 4:30.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. I can set it up however.
Well, it must be now, because I, yeah.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure, but I could make sure that that's, that's the case. And I don't, you know, see any problem with it one way or another. Just have to flick a switch.
All right. Recall Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ryan. Number 10, discussion of possible action on Mitchell County Emergency Response Plan. So we discussed this at department head. Basically, we just need to review it every year to make sure it's still accurate. So we did update the dates, and then there was like a blank page in there, so we removed that, updated the page numbers. And then there were a few grammar errors throughout, but nothing in the whole part really changed.
Is it a resolution or just simply an act?
It's just a motion, and then we sign, or the chair will sign.
Good.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam second. Any further discussion? Recall Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye. Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 11, consideration of resolution setting a public hearing for consideration of ordinance entitled, ordinance enacting a new right-of-way control ordinance to regulate certain occupancies and uses of county right-of-way. All right. The Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, met in regular slash special session on the 19th day of August, 2025, at 8:30 AM. The adoption of the following resolution was moved and seconded, whereas the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors desires to pass ordinance number 61, which is entitled, "In Ordinance Enacting a New Right-of-Way Control Ordinance to Regulate Certain Occupancies and Uses of County Right-of-Way." And whereas it is, it is in the best interest of Mitchell County, Iowa, and is now necessary to act, whereas now therefore be it resolved that Mitchell County Ordinance Number 61 be enacted through required methods. Be it further resolved that this matter come on for hearing and the option of the ordinance to effect the same come on for hearing on the ninth day of September, 2025, at 8:45 AM at the Board of Supervisors room at the Mitchell County Courthouse in Osage, Iowa, that appropriate, that appropriate notices be published, if so passed today. And this would be resolution 1312-25. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve a resolution for setting the public hearing for the ordinance for enacting a new right-of-way ordinance to regulate certain occupancies and uses of county right-of-way, 1312-25 resolution.
Pam made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion?
I would question.
Oh, sorry.
I would question that, I mean, this has been on our table for third time, and there were no changes to the document any of those times. So I've had a number of concerns with it, and none of those considerations have been addressed. So I'm never sure what, what's different. I guess that's my comment. I still feel it's a violation of Iowa code because we're conflicting with it.
And I think Tim Whipple will address that.
Yes, it's, it's masked as a right-of-way ordinance, but it's actually a liquid hazardous liquid pipeline ordinance. When Whipple wrote the document, he billed us for it, and on that document, that's what he described it as, as a liquid hazardous pipeline ordinance. He described it that himself. So that's what it is. It's specific. So that's just a few of the concerns I have. That's just a statement.
Okay. So I guess I would like to reiterate that taxpayers paid for the creation of these right-of-ways. Tim Whipple was very clear that your concerns over the fact that you think it's against state law, I think he did, he quoted all of the codes and confirmed that indeed protecting our right-of-way is totally within our state and federal rights. A right-of-way establishes the equitable and efficient legal framework that also protects the financial interests of our county taxpayers. And I think he addressed the questions that anyone put forth to him quite honestly. And your question about why are we bringing this back? I believe that the public is in support of protecting Mitchell County's right-of-way, and it is our responsibility as representatives of those to do so. He also discussed the fact that if in fact people are going to put anything into this county through the right-of-way, it's going to be through a pipeline of sorts, not necessarily CO2 pipeline, but whatever it is, it's going to more than likely go into the ground. And so we, in an effort to protect our county's right-of-way, we have, have brought this forth.
Our, our utility permit does say that all pipelines need to be buried. That's already a given.
That's a public, and I also think Tim Whipple addressed that. That's a public document. What we're talking about, the right-of-way ordinance, is for private entities.
Thank you for interrupting me.
You're...
And so also, he wrote this ordinance, this proposed ordinance. He also wrote the survey ordinance, which he himself said is under litigation itself. He also did not guarantee that this would not be challenged in court. Setback distances have been challenged in court and appeals court. They've also been overruled where it can't, if you do the math as far as the setback distances, it's pretty obvious that it's limiting, and I say this every time, it's not that I'm for the pipeline, it's that I understand that this is against Iowa code, that you can't be doing this. If you do the math as far as all the setback distances with intersections on both ends, a house driveway, a field driveway, a culvert, a tile line, a bridge, our, our roads are littered with that. They basically have no place to cross, and that is what's going to red flag them to say you cannot be doing that. Again, that's just my statement. I've said that before. I'll, I'll keep saying that because I agree with you.
With all due respect, are you?
I'm done.
Is it all right?
Well, certainly, I have quite a pause here.
Thank you. So I, I think most of the people have heard your comments. They've heard my comments. I have encouraged people that have had questions to reach out to any of the Board of Supervisor members if they have questions. And I feel that this is an important step to protect us from any private entity, any private entity. And I guess I, I'm a little bit puzzled as to your legal background on, on the lawsuit issues. So I, I'm, I'm able to question that from that standpoint. He has, Tim Whipple has an excellent record and a lot of experience in any type of utility ordinance or any type of utility right-of-way passage over the years. Without a doubt, this has come forward due to CO2 pipeline. I don't think anybody is saying that we're, we're not starting to address this, you know, just out of the clear blue. Without a doubt, that, that has been the, the driving force as far as us starting to address some of these issues. It isn't any different, however, than the fact that you just passed a windmill ordinance or that we are looking at the possibility of reviewing a solar ordinance, both of which have a much higher chance of getting sued than a right-of-way ordinance, because we have state and federal right to protect our right-of-way. I think we've, I, I respect that, your, your opinion, and, and I think that you've stated yours, and I've stated mine, and I don't know if there are...
I need to clarify that I'm not a lawyer, so my legal expertise is not in the legal realm. But I can simply see in the news and read papers that this has been challenged and it's been defeated. There's been lawsuits in regards to this, and the appeals court had also ruled that in favor of the pipeline. So it's not that I have legal expertise. I can simply read. In regards to the wind turbine ordinance or the solar ordinance, he did discuss that, but he, he also emphasized that what the code specifies is for solar ordinances with 25 megawatts or larger.
Right.
He didn't, he didn't deal with the wind turbine ordinance. We can do that. That's why we did do that. So to clarify, he specified on 25 megawatt solar ordinances.
So let me clarify again, which we talked about several times, that indeed the lawsuits that you're referring to are for CO2 pipeline zoning ordinances. A distinct difference, a right-of-way ordinance is not a CO2 pipeline zoning ordinance. And he stated that, and he made that very clear at least a couple times during that conversation. And there are no ongoing lawsuits for right-of-way because of the fact that we have that legal right. So that's...
It's remarkable that he billed us for a liquid hazardous liquid pipeline ordinance. That's what's on the billing.
Yeah.
So he knows himself. I could say this all day, so I'm done.
Yep.
Unless you challenge me in my legal expertise, something to that effect, I'm done.
Recall Sydney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
No.
Motion passes. Number 12, appoint representative to the North Iowa Regional Housing Authority. I think we got an email from Ashley. She's coming up and.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
So, yeah, so Ashley Rolson-Doll is currently serving as the North Iowa Area Housing Representative, and so as of September 30th, she will no longer be able to fulfill those responsibilities. So we're able, like right now, she's the main representative or the alternate, so if you guys would like, Kela can take on the lead representative, and I can serve as alternate, effective October 1st.
Her last name is Zimmerman, right?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to appoint Kela Zimmerman as the representative to the North Iowa Regional Housing Authority? And Jenny?
I always say my last name wrong. Ask the doctor.
Baker.
Baker. As an alternate.
I'll move to make that motion.
Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Recall Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jim.
Number 13, discussion of possible action on home base Iowa application.
Yep, so we have one home base Iowa application for Roger Mickelson, so he's relocated here from Minnesota. And so back, in case you guys don't know, in order to be a home-based community, the county needed to provide an incentive, so that incentive is $1,000 to anybody that relocates to Mitchell County. So he's providing me with all the paperwork I need, so I'm just looking for your guys' approval. Because he did move from out of state, he also was eligible for the Iowa $5,000 relocation grant as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Todd?
Yeah.
Todd, second. Any further discussion? Recall Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you for the service.
Yes, thank you. Meetings attended.
I had nothing.
I had nothing.
I attended the conservation meeting and might pretty well recap that for you.
At the safety meeting, and we went through the panic button and the key fobs, and had the sheriff volunteer to do the public information officer in case we have a disaster.
I had a fair board meeting, just a, it was kind of short post-fair meeting. Some of the fair board was at the Iowa State Fair, so we weren't complete, but all in all went over pretty good. They've already got some of the, like carnival and grandstands things verbally for next year, couple of the bands. I guess I do want to ask you guys, I think last year we had them come and do a post-fair just to talk about it. Would you like them to come back again sometime here in the near future?
Sure.
It was a rundown on everything, so I'll ask them to do that then, so. That was it.
All right. Public comments. Next? Next, oh, hello?
I would just like to say, thank you for passing the IT hearing, the resolution for the public hearing. And I, you know, you didn't mention, but it's really infrastructure tax dollars that we're trying to protect by having this kind of a right-of-way ordinance, which makes sense to taxpayers.
Seeing no other public comments?
I will echo what she said, but you need to remember that this county ordinance will complement anything that the state has already got in place. The state doesn't dictate where anything goes. The county owns the roads, the ditches, and the right-of-way. The state doesn't tell you where to put things. So this ordinance will complement that. So again, thank you for passing that. Any other? I agree that as well, and I just think just having a public hearing is an important piece of this, so I appreciate that. And, and again, thinking of the future and what else may be coming at us. Thank you.
I see no more hands, so I'll adjourn the meeting at 9:06.